Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, March 11, 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting. Let me introduce everyone at the tables. We have our town administrator over here, Rebecca Oldham, Kathy Castronella, Selectwoman, Jason Naves, Selectman, Mark Prento, Selectman, Eddie Watson's not here. I'm Daniel McDonald, I'll be your chairman this evening. Please join us in saying the Pledge of the Allegiance. Pledge of the Allegiance to the Father, to the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, living in justice for all. All right. First up, we have public comment. Do we have any public comments this evening? No one. We have a public hearing pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 82, Section 21 and 22. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on today at 6:30 PM on the proposed road layout of Billis Way per the petition of Al Cool Yard as prepared by Michael Sergi PLS dated February 28, 2024. Public is welcome to attend and give comments. So who's, uh, who's here on that issue? State your name for the racket.
Absolutely. My name is Annie Schindler. I'm the Town Planner and Conservation Agent. So I'm here to talk about this. So this is the first step procedurally for a road getting accepted in the state of Massachusetts. Master general law dictates that first, the Board of Selectmen lay out the way and send it to the planning board for them to make a recommendation. And then from there, it comes back to the Board of Selectmen for the Board of Selectmen to make a recommendation. So we are here tonight to ask that the Board of Selectmen lay out the way and send it to the planning board for recommendation. And once the Board of Selectmen recommends it on the warrant, it will go to the town meeting and residents will vote on the acceptance.
Can you tell us what you've done so far? And have you spoken with highway and police? And procedurally, can you bring us up to speed on the history of this?
Yeah, absolutely. So this was permitted a few years ago. I believe its decision was issued in about 2017. And since then, it's been built. All of the nine homes on the lot are currently occupied with residents. I have reached out to the Water and Sewer Department, the Groveland Municipal Light Department, the Highway Superintendent, and the Fire Department. In your packet, you had correspondence from the Fire Chief saying that they are good to go. You had correspondence from the Water and Sewer Superintendent saying that they are basically good to go. They had some issues during the construction of the project with the sewer, specifically the developer who, or I shouldn't say developer, I'm sorry, the contractor who was doing the work on the sewer passed away during the project. So on individual homeowner's lots, they're not sure where the sewer ties are, but anything that would be owned by the town in the right of way, they know where that is. The Water and Sewer Department likes to know where it is as a courtesy to allow, to let residents know for dig safe where sewer is on their property. It's not to say that they can't find it out, they would just have to camera their lines to get there. So the Water and Sewer Superintendent did sign off on that. I, on your table, you do have dated today a letter from the Groveland Municipal Light Department. They're all set. You are missing correspondence from the Highway Superintendent. The reason for that is a homeowner, I believe it was, it's lot three, it's Billis Way number nine. They must have done, the homeowner themselves must have done work in their backyard and they drove over to the sidewalk and cracked it. When the Highway Superintendent was doing his site visit for this last week, he discovered it. He's been in contact with the developer and they're going to fix that mid this week. So I'm hoping that by the time this goes to the planning board for recommendation, I will have that Highway Superintendent letter with his okay.
So you mentioned these houses are already built?
Yep.
So this would have been, I'm guessing, assume that would have already have gone through some sort of phase at the planning board.
Yes.
So is this just the final phase to kind of turn it over to the town? Is that what this is? Kind of we annex it and it becomes a public way and we take responsibility for the plowing and the driving a trash truck down there? And, and, and we reserve, are we, are granted an easement? Is that part of the deal that we get an easement so that we can access that area?
Sure, sure. So that's exactly correct. So right now, this process is just for the roadway specifically. Currently, residents on that street do not get trash pickup in front of their home. They have to bring their trash down to the intersection at Mean Street. And currently, the developer is still responsible for plowing, salting, et cetera, et cetera. So this is the beginning of the process for the town accepting it as a town road, which would go on our Chapter 90 list. We would plow it, we would salt it, we would maintain the road. There are easements associated with this project. Most of them are drainage easements, so we would be able to maintain the drainage associated with the road as well as be able to access where those drainage structures are. So it's kind of both, but yes, we would take, it wouldn't be an easement for the road, we would just straight own the road.
And there's an easement, I guess, into everyone's yard, I guess, 10 feet or something, isn't there?
Yep, it does extend about 10 feet into folks' yards so that we can maintain like sidewalk, for example.
Okay, so what do you need from the board this evening? Procedurally, the Board of Selectmen needs to approve it and then it goes to the planning board or it goes to the planning board and then comes back to us for final approval? And then does this need to go to Town Hall for their final, you know, approval of it?
Yep, so right now, what the Board of Selectmen, if they so choose, they are going to recommend this to, or send this, lay out the way to recommend to the, or request that the planning board make a recommendation. The planning board hopefully will make a favorable recommendation and it will come back to the Board of Selectmen.
For final approval, so our
Yep.
hypothetical motion would be a motion to recommend that the planning board adopt this. And then they, once they sign off, then we get it back for final approval and then do we need town?
Yep. Your final recommendation will be the recommendation that would show up on the
Warrant article for, to be voted on at town meeting.
Yep.
Just for clarification, so the layout of the way is approved by the Board of Selectmen, the acceptance of the way is approved at town meeting, so there won't be a recommendation on the warrant article. It will just be for the laying out of the way.
Well, it's not even laying out. I mean, I didn't do the meats and pounds on it. I'm not an engineer or a surveyor, so I'd have to go along with the planning board. I would, I would think that they've already gone through this process and we're really initiate, we're recommending to the planning board what they've already recommended. And the houses are already built, so seems like a circular theory of events.
The Mass. General Law on it also makes me scratch my head.
It's convoluted.
I would agree, though it's Mass. General Law, though, it's the way we have to do it.
Yeah, I, you know, don't always like MGLs. Anyways, does anyone on the board have any questions? Kathy?
No, I met with Annie for a little while prior to this meeting and she clarified some sections. I guess the only last second question I have is the two parcels that are going to be dated to the town.
Yep.
Do we have to vote to accept those parcels?
At town meeting, correct.
That's when we'll do that, the town meeting will do that vote to accept the parcels?
Town meeting will do that vote. That's correct.
Okay, so we're just going to vote to accept the lane out of the road?
Correct.
Basically, okay, thank you.
Jason?
No questions.
Mark?
Nope.
I don't have any further, would you like to add anything before we move the issue?
No, I'm all set. Again, I'll see you at your next meeting after it goes to the planning board and then bounces back.
Stick around, make sure we get the verbiage right on a motion. Would you like to make a motion, Kathy?
Make sure I get, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the lane out of Billis Way as shown in the subdivision plans before us this night.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Four in favor, one absent.
All right, thank you guys very much.
There you go.
Have a good rest of your night.
Thanks.
That was the quickest public hearing we ever had. Next up, we have discussion and possible votes. One, approve the property use permit filed by Fred Hall for the Knights of Columbus for the annual Easter egg hunt at the Pines Recreation Area on March 23, 2024, from 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM.
I make a motion to approve the property use permit by Fred Hall and the Knights of Columbus for the annual Easter egg hunt at the Pines Recreation Area on March 23, 2024, from 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM.
I'll second that.
Mark, seconded, any discussion, Kathy?
Just one question. At some point, can we move this responsibility to the town administrator? I mean, I feel like we're just a rubber stamp. Do we have to vote these or would we be allowed to allow? You know what's in use and when it's in use, right? You have a full yes. So our town administrator is consistently checking that these permits are in order and that the space that's being asked for is available. I mean, at a future meeting, can we have on an agenda item to allow that responsibility to rest with the town administrator?
Sure, I think similar to
The warrants, yeah.
The warrants is just like give it to us in correspondence, so we can't say we, I never heard of that, I didn't know about that. So as long as we somehow get relayed the information and if there's any objection, then maybe the board could initiate, you know, us voting on something if there was something controversial or something, somebody objected to and
With the Easter egg hunt.
Say again?
Controversial Easter egg hunt.
Yeah, you know, like two Santa Clauses on a truck and something else at the same time. I mean, I take issue with that. I mean, you can't have two Santa Clauses. All right, so you want to move this issue?
Yep.
Yeah, I can, and we can add that as an agenda item, no problem. Mark, seconded?
Yep.
All right, move the question, all those in favor? Four in favor, one absent, passes. Number two, 2023 Town Report Draft.
So at your last meeting, I had put before you the draft for the 2024 Annual Town Report. There were two items that were missing from the report from two different departments. I had spoken with those departments and they had provided the updated information. That information was included in the final draft. So before you this evening is the final draft of the 2023 Annual Report for your approval. Are there any questions or concerns or comments?
Is it perfect?
Nothing's ever perfect.
Is it the Mona Lisa?
It is definitely not. Pretty close, though.
Is it available for everyone to review that wants to?
As soon as the board approves the, the final draft, I will make it available on the website and we will get printed copies so that they're readily available for town meeting on April 29.
Is there anything on there that we should be aware of?
Not, not that I would call attention to.
Same, same as always.
Essentially, yes, all of the same required information, information about trust funds, information about salaries, information about annual town meeting warrants, elections, results, just updates from departments about what they've been working on, what they've accomplished, some statistics in terms of how many licenses were filed, how many licenses the Board of Selectmen approved, things of that nature. So all pretty standard.
Okay, any questions, Kathy?
No, I reviewed the report. I thought, I thought it was a really good report. I think that under the town administrator, it's, we've seen a very improved report. It has some really interesting statistics about our demographics, which are nice to see, and in addition to all the, the regular reports from each department, which, you know, take me a while to read through all, but I like to go through it all and see what, what went on during the year in all different areas, because we don't always get that information. And the other thing I was going to say is, for like, like 30 years, everybody has asked, why can't we have this report before we go to the annual town meeting? And now, ta-da, we have it. So voters going to annual town meeting will have this historic reference of the annual town report from 2023, which is kind of nice, get to let you know a little bit more about the town.
Jason?
Something I found very interesting about the report, which I don't think I've seen on other reports, was the list of CPC projects and also the list of grants awarded and what they were used for. I think that's very important information. Mark?
Yeah, I only got halfway through it because I, you know, don't own a computer, so I was looking at it on my cellphone, so that's why I got the hard copy here. So I'm going to finish reading that tonight, but everything that I did read on, on the email looked good, so I'm happy.
Looks good to me. Want to move the question? Kathy?
Yep, I make a motion to accept the 2023 Annual Report as presented tonight by the town administrator.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the Annual Report? Say aye. Four in favor, one absent. Next up, number three, we have a review, Review Memorandum of Agreement and Vote to Ratify the Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Teamsters Union Local 170 Town of Groveland Highway Department for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Everyone had a chance to review that. Rebecca, could you give us a synopsis on that? Any, what was before and what are the major deltas, if anything, in the change in that agreement?
Of course. So I had the pleasure of meeting with the Teamsters Union Local 170 concerning the update for the Groveland Highway Department contract. As stated, this will take us from July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2027. Some of the changes were very administrative in nature, so talking about payroll deductions, the probationary period and making sure that was solidified as its standard practice, but not necessarily something that's included as part of the agreement. There was the addition of the paid holidays and a new addition for half-day holidays that were, something that was requested. There was also some request for changing the language to reflect what we had recently reproved in our personnel policies and procedures. So under vacations, you'll see that terminology that we approved most recently about how after you've worked for the town for six years, you're able to accrue vacation at a faster rate. Additionally, another request was for an additional five days to be able to carry over from the end of the fiscal year. We did put parameters in place that are very similar to what we currently have, where if you don't use it by the end of September, then you lose that time. And also, if you were to leave in that timeframe, then you would not be able to count that unused vacation time towards your buyback if you were to leave. So that was another protection that we put in place. They had asked for an additional accumulation of sick days. That was not approved, but we did allow them to accrue the sick time at a rate that we have, that's similar to what we have in our personnel policies and procedures for the max of the 120 days. We have the official retirement and the language that we have that allows the employees to buy back about 30% of their unused accumulated sick leave if they were to retire or if they were to pass away. So that, again, is standard language that we have in our current agreement that is not in the collective bargaining agreement. Then we have the classification of wage rates. Those also changed. What we did when we took a closer look at this is we did what we did with the Town Hall employees, where we used the call-in center wage study and we added an additional increase to their wage rates in order to correlate to corresponding communities of the same size or comparable communities. And then we went back to our standard practice in the third year of the 2% cost of living increase. And then there was a change that was made in the overtime and call-in pay. Specifically, the agreement had called into question that, you know, during the state of emergency and whether or not a pandemic classified as a state of emergency and whether or not there was a clause that's in the existing contract would require the town to pay two and, two and a half for their pay rate when they were working. So we had asked them to correct that language into only related towards weather-related events, which was what the intent of the language was originally, and they agreed upon that. And then the only other addition was that during the snowstorms, that the town, like other communities, would pay for a meal for the employees up to $20 after they worked a 12 hours, excuse me, 12 hours of continuous work. And so those were the only other changes that were requested and agreed upon. So both the Teamsters Union had agreed to these changes and myself, and now it is for, for the Board of Selectmen to approve as well.
All right, can I ask you a question about Article 22, Roman numeral, Roman numeral, It says, there's three columns there, it says plus $2 an hour. So if I read this right, it's 37.26 plus two, so it'd be 39.26?
No, it would be the, as the rates as depicted.
So, so the 37 and 26 cents represents
The $2 increase.
It's included, it's not exclusive.
Correct.
All right, I didn't, I wasn't clear on that. I don't want it to be 37 or construed that at plus 39 if that's not what it's meant to be.
Nope, it's definitely the 37.26. It was the, the intent was to show and be transparent about what was being requested and what was being provided. So that would be, as the rates as listed are what they would be for fiscal year '25, '26, and '27.
So if we go from $35 an hour and change plus $2, that's probably what a, what's the math on that, like 5%, 5 and a half, 5, 5 plus?
About a 5% increase.
So the, the department head's responsible for staying within the budget line item. So there's not a risk here that we exceed our, you know, 2% or 2 and a half percent or this gets run away, you know, runs away with us, right?
Yes, the, we, we have the allocation as, as negotiated in the, in the estimated budget that's being proposed.
Okay, does it, you know, what I'm concerned about is, is that line item going to go up 5%?
In overall, in terms of wages and what we have already agreed upon in the current agreement?
Yeah, probably.
It, it could with the, with the amount of, I'd have to double check. I think it's about the same.
And, and, and is that, is that and was it considered in our budget for the next year?
It's, it's
We have the money?
It's included in the estimate that we have, or the, the budget hasn't been finalized yet, the
But it's been incorporated on the draft, it's in there.
Exactly, in the draft, it has been incorporated.
So it works.
It, it does, right now, we have a balanced budget.
So this is a reset, because they're underpaid competitively. And then it's a reset for two years and then it goes to 2% and they've agreed to that. How long does that 2% go for? This is a three-year contract, right?
Exactly, so it's just for the next three years. So there would be the $2 increase, the $1.50 increase, and then we would go back to being 2%.
Year, year three's not an hourly, it's a plus two.
Yep.
And is that plus 2% included in the 39.54?
Exactly, the rates as listed are the rates that they would be offered.
Okay, all right. Any questions, Kathy?
No, I've been through this and it, you know, gives them what we can afford to give them, which is good, and it brings them in line with the salary study that we brought the non-union employees into line with. I'm imagining that's a similar alignment. We're not going to be, we're not able to bring them up to the top, but we're able to bring them somewhere close to the median. Is that what this represents?
Yes.
Okay, then that, that's fair, you know, and do what we can do when we try to be fair.
Jason?
I'm good.
Mark?
Nope, it seems, seems pretty fair. We've got some good, talented guys, like to keep them around, so.
All right, somebody want to move the issue?
Into, sorry, to answer your question, the total line item increase, and that includes what's already in the contract, being clothing allowances, on-call pay, et cetera, you're looking at a 10% increase in the line item.
10%? And that's backed into what we have available and?
Yes, and it's lower than what was requested by the department.
It's lower than what they requested, so they didn't
Department submitted an increase for the line item for 311,718, and with the negotiated contract, it brings it down to 288,300.
So who negotiated that? You?
Yeah.
You saved us money? All right. What's next? Kathy's motion, your motion?
Can I make a motion?
I don't know, did you?
I make a motion to approve the memorandum agreement between the Town of Groveland and the Teamsters Union Local 170 Town of Groveland Highway Department as presented to us tonight. It'll cover the period from July 1, 2024 to, is it July 1, 2027? Am I right on that?
Three years.
Three years. So June 30, sorry, June 30, 2027.
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Four in favor, one absent. What's next? I lost my place, what's my agenda? I shuffled the deck. Thanks, Jason. Too much paper. Next up, number four. We have another collective bargaining agreement. Now, Review Memorandum of Agreement and Vote to Ratify the Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Teamsters Union Local 170 Town of Groveland Water and Sewer Department for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Same thing, Rebecca, is this similar to what we just did or?
Very much so. So the same applies for the payroll deductions, union dues and the assessment. The only differences between this contract and the other contract that we just discussed is the licenses and certifications in terms of the CDL driver's license, I mean, excuse me, the CDL and Class D driver's license. And there is another change in relation to the base rates, as you'll see in that particular section, again, that was based on the call-in center and the comparable communities, but the additional language that prior to the application of the 2024 annual base wage increase, they'll abolish the 75 cents per hour reduction to not possessing a CDL license.
And the hourly rate in year one is $2, which is on par with the other union department. And second year, $1.50 increase per hour, and then 2% in year three, same thing, right?
Correct.
And we have money in the budget for all of these items. So far?
Yes, and this is part of the enterprise fund. So the enterprise fund is different than the operational fund because it comes from the rate users, I mean, excuse me, the rate payers and the users for that utility.
So they can always break even or make a profit because they have the power to increase rates, generate revenue. Any questions, Kathy?
No, just, it would be nice to have the tables both go in the same direction, like from the lowest salary to the highest. One of them goes, highway goes lowest to highest, and this one goes lowest to highest. Like, I'm flipping back and forth, am I seeing this right? Yeah, and so I, I feel like sometimes they compare back and forth.
Yes.
They do, okay.
So the only other item that, I'm sorry, that I should have mentioned is not the same is that obviously with the plowing and the 12 hours and the meal, that wouldn't be the same for the water and sewer. They don't have the same type of working condition, so that's not something that's listed in there.
Well, do, do some of those employees plow for the town or would that, they're not allowed to?
They do not plow for the town.
Are they not allowed to?
I'm not sure not allowed to would be the right term, but they don't plow for the town now.
Oh, okay. I don't know, for some reason, I thought they could do that as well.
You good, Kathy?
Um, and the, the state of emergency, it's amending.
That's the same as the highway. So it, it changes it so that where it says state of emergency provisions shall apply to weather-related events and national, natural catastrophes, it does not apply to a pandemic.
So we're taking out that other language?
We're not taking it out, we're just specifying that it is weather-related events only.
I got it, thank you. That's good, I'm good, thank you.
Jason?
I'm good.
Mark?
Nope.
All right, I'll move the
I'm good.
Mark?
Nope.
All right, I'll move the question. Uh, would you like to make a motion, Kathy?
I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Groveland and the Teamsters Union Local One Seventy, representing the Town of Groveland Water and Sewer Department, and it will apply from July first, twenty twenty-four, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
I'll second.
Mark, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor to ratify it? Four in favor, one absent. Passes. That's it on discussion and possible votes. Next up, we have appointments of the board. Number five, appoint Kyle Alado, Canterbury Forest Road, Plastown, New Hampshire, as a part-time officer for Groveland Police, for the Groveland Police Department below for a proba- probationary period effective March eleventh, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, just on the, uh, recommendation of the police chief.
That is correct.
Okay?
Make a motion to appoint Kyle Aladro to, um, part-time officer for Groveland Police Department for probationary period effective March eleventh, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Welcome aboard. Uh, next up, number six, appoint Michael McIntosh of, uh, Montclair Road, Haverhill, as a full-time dispatcher for the Groveland Police Department below for a probationary period effective March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is this also on their recommendation of the police chief? All right.
I'll make a motion to appoint Michael McIntosh, the full-time dispatcher for Groveland Police Department for a probationary period effective March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Welcome aboard. All right. Approval of the minutes? We don't have any. Hold our unfinished business.
Reading the minutes? Oh, correspondence, okay, that's what I saw.
Lot to vote on.
Lot to vote on. I gotcha.
Next time.
Next.
Number seven, reminder of upcoming elections and open seats, selectman McDonald, that, that'd be me. So, uh, it's democracy here at its finest, grassroots style, so anyone who wants to get involved, plenty of opportunity, plenty of boards, including this board. Uh, two seats are up for election, uh, no matter what your political leanings, you know? Get involved if you want to. Uh, you want diversity, be diverse, you know? Four guys on this board and one woman. You want all women? Come on out and vote. This is America. Get involved and, uh, make a difference, uh, change the world the, the way you want it to be changed, you know? But if, uh, you sit on the sideline and do nothing, then, uh, you take your chances on what you get. So I urge everybody that's, you know, get involved. You might like it, make some friends, might make some enemies, who knows? You know? You might have fun, you can do as much work or as little as you want, and it doesn't take up all your life. And, uh, I've been on the several boards and, uh, it's good. So, uh, we have elections coming up. Mark, do you have the detail on that?
I do. Uh, the last day to pull papers is March fourteenth, um, last day to file the nomination papers is March eighteenth, and then, uh, last day to withdraw your nomination papers is April third, and then last day to register the vote is April nineteenth.
There you go. There you have it. Be there. All right. Next up, we have, uh, town administrator, no, strike that, we have, uh, other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. Did anything come up, Mark? Jason? Kathy?
Nope.
All right, nothing here. Uh, town administrator time, Rebecca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just have a couple of items, just, uh, I know that this evening was a very short meeting, but just to remind you that the next meeting will be a very busy meeting. Uh, we will need to finalize the Bellis Way Street acceptance and the laying out of the public way. We have a public hearing for the underground fuel storage at nine thirty-one Salem Street. We will be closing the warrant, hopefully. We will be reviewing the warrant, and we will also be reviewing the omnibus, and that will most likely be continued to our next meeting, which will be April eighth. And on April eighth, we're looking to finalize the warrant for posting, which needs to be done on that Friday, April twelfth. And then our next meeting will be on April twenty-second, which is a week before town meeting, and then town meeting is on April twenty-ninth. So we have a very quick turnaround time. Um, I have the warrant drafted currently. It was under review by town council. Town council has taken a first review of the warrant. We, we do look like we're in pretty good shape. The school is going to be voting, excuse me, the school committee is going to be voting on their assessment numbers tomorrow. Um, that being said, we'll have a final number from them, and we also got some updated numbers, excuse me, we also received some updated numbers from the, uh, GIC, which is our health insurance, so we're looking at an eight cent increase as opposed to what we had budgeted for, for an eleven percent increase, which was the range, the nine to eleven percent was what they gave us, so we went with the high end to be, to be cautious. Um, so the finance board is not meeting this week, they are meeting on the twentieth, so they will be reviewing the budget and, uh, finalizing some of those numbers, so that should be taken care of at that meeting and presented to the board as part of that warrant and omnibus package on the twenty-fifth. So we do have a lot on our plate, and again, it'll be a very quick turnaround, and if we do need to, we can obviously schedule a special meeting with the Board of Selectmen if more time is needed. We will also be reviewing the warrant, and as part of that, there's the community preservation articles, so I know Mr. Dempsey will be present to, to report back on the community preservation articles, and we'll have any other departments present for any of their warrant articles related to whether it be, I know there's a zoning article for battery storage, their council on aging is looking to update their general bylaw, there's an unregistered vehicles bylaw that we're looking at. Um, so there are other types of, uh, issues that we have before us that are being proposed that we'll need to discuss in further detail. So I can speak with you, Mr. Chairman, prior to posting the agenda for that meeting, and if we wanna block out or organize it a little differently, we can do that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what it is. I mean, so we don't do four-hour marathon sessions here and we're all bleary-eyed and, uh, you know, if these, you know, devote as much time as we need on these, if they're serious issues and need a serious attention, um, I'd like all members of the board to be present, so if you can't be here, then maybe we schedule a Monday through a Tuesday night or something like that, but I, you know, we're gonna vote on, you know, all of those things, uh, like a full board. And, um, so if anyone can't be here, if you can give notice to Rebecca, then we'll, you know, we'll switch gears. If you can't be here on a Monday, then, uh, my suggestion will be, then we reschedule it, you know? And, uh, I think it's important that everyone's here. We got some big budgetary issues that are serious, you know? If the school comes in at foreign change on their increase, then, uh, you know, we're gonna talk about it, you know? If we got some bylaw issues that are, uh, you know, of critical importance, then, uh, you know, we need as much time to deliberate on these things as we need. So we might have to do a special meeting and, uh, and bifurcate if there's too many things on the agenda. I, I, unless, uh, everyone here wants to go to midnight if we need it, you know? I just, if we need to split and do, uh, two, two and a half-hour sessions, then that's what we need. What do you think, Kathy?
Well, I guess, I mean, I know myself personally, you know, other than illness or something, you know, emergency-type situation, I plan to be here because I know it's, it is budget time.
Yep.
And we need to address this. So, um, if a member has already made plans to be somewhere else, I'm not willing to reschedule our budget meeting to another day because that member knows that this is budget time. So that, I'm firm on. Um, and if somebody becomes ill or something, I, I feel like we have to address our budget. We have five members. If we have four members, we still have a pretty diverse group, I think we should be able to do the work, but, um, I was going to suggest, um, potentially scheduling, uh, a Monday, Tuesday, um, to try and, cause rather than skip a whole week and then try to remember what we were talking about, maybe schedule, you know, two, two-hour meetings or something like that, trying to end by nine. Um, because one of the things that we have not been able to do, and I always regret this, and I didn't know if we could allow perhaps a half an hour at the beginning of the meeting for a public comment on the town budget, like if we could post the draft and just allow a half an hour for anybody in the public who reads it and wants to say something. Not that we would debate with them, just tell us what you're thinking, cause other than that, we sometimes don't hear from people until we hit town meeting with our recommendations. And, and I regret that we just don't open it up before the town meeting. That's all. Other than that, we do the best we can, I understand.
Well, we have, uh, we have public comments, so anyone's welcome on any issue or any topic to submit it prior to the meeting to myself or Rebecca, that's our procedure, one of us, so I, I don't wanna put a segue for, you know, a half hour and then we're sitting here and nobody's before us, so I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be locked in.
Well... Okay, but again, the, uh, like the school budget, they have an open hearing and the public is allowed to...
A hearing or a comment?
Well, it's a comment. I mean, they call it, I think they call it a hearing, but it's not really, it's a comment. And you can just state your piece, you don't have to take the mic for...
We could delineate, public comment and anyone who wants to talk about, um...
For three, three minutes, you know?
School budget or something.
Yeah, if you wanna get up and give us your thoughts about a budget.
Yeah, and I would like to limit, uh, some of our, sometimes we have people go off on...
Well, the school committee typically limits it two to three minutes of, of time for a person. You're not supposed to get up and talk for twenty minutes.
And we don't wanna hear the parade of people saying the same thing over and over again, so...
Well, that can be said, if someone's already made the point, then the point's made.
We get it. They can say, "I agree with what she said."
Yeah, it's just that sometimes we just, at the town meeting, someone will say something, and I just didn't think about it until town meeting.
All right. I wanna clear conflicts, though, if anyone has a problem with that Tuesday, and you may already have plans, so I'll talk to Rebecca about this and we'll, uh, if we need a, a back-to-back marathon session to plow through this information responsibly, then that's what we'll do.
Yeah, I mean, we could have it available, and if we need it, it's there, and if we don't...
Can we do that? Can we cancel if we don't need it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. I just need to know, uh, a little bit more beforehand, like I, I do know that Selectman Watson will not be here on the twenty-fifth, so I, 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 in my draft, I have the opening of all these issues, but if we wanna wait until he's back until April, I can wait until he's back in April. I just, I just need, I just need warning, that's all I'm asking. Uh, but we can definitely make whatever needs to happen, happen, cause I know that the finance board also wants to be able to accommodate their schedule, to accommodate your schedule, if there's any changes or any additional information that needs to be had, or if there's any additional deliberation. Um, so I just need a little bit more forewarning, but we can definitely schedule meetings, cancel them as needed, and, and what have you. We just need to just communicate about that.
Well, we could post, say, I mean, just procedurally, you post on Thursday, you try to?
Yes.
For the Monday, so we could post the Monday and the Tuesday, kind of this, Tuesday, I'll call it a spillover meeting or overflow meeting if we need it. And then if we wrap it up on Monday night, we just cancel.
Yes.
That's, that's allowed?
Yes, unless we have a, a hearing scheduled or something of that.
Yeah, hearing set in stone, you gotta give notice and people show up and you, you have to have the lights on. All right, we'll work it out.
Yes.
Anything, Jason?
Nope.
Mark?
Nope.
Anything else, Rebecca?
Nope.
All right, so we got a lot to go through and, you know, maybe we'll read through it and digest it ahead of time. And anyone who wants to chime in, feel free. Um, next up, selectmen timing reports. Time to be used to make statements, propose future agenda items, or congratulate residents' teams on accomplishments, this time should not be used to initiate a discussion. Kathy, do you have anything?
Well, I had the pleasure of attending, um, Council on Aging hosted Maria Stefanas at the middle, well, middle, high school for Women's History Month, and, uh, it was a very lively and interesting discussion. She's, she's always entertaining, she's such a professional, and, um, I think she's an inspiration to the young people that were there that are trying to go into journalism and other fields, and she certainly fielded questions about that. In addition, she also fielded questions like, how do you make sure you don't wear the same thing twice in one week? And there was, there was, um, there were fun moments. She talked about balancing, um, a family and a career, both she and her husband both have, um, careers that are very demanding, and, uh, it was, it was just, it was just a wonderful time. Like I say, it's, it's always wonderful to see, um, someone who grew up in Groveland come back, and she says her heart still belongs to Groveland, she loves us the best, we are the bestest. She made sure to say that, and, uh, for that, we will always adore her. And, um, yeah, we should invite her back another time. She's just a very entertaining speaker, uh, just really a good time, and it was really well-attended. Um, so shout-outs to the Council on Aging, the director of Council on Aging hosted it and, uh, spoke beautifully, and everything flowed from where I was seamlessly, it was just very well-run. And, uh, I think everybody who attended it left with a smile on their face, which is good to see, really good to see.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yep.
Uh, Jason?
Yes, I'd like to thank, um, Colin and everybody that's helped him, uh, continue his work to raise funds for, uh, water mains. Um, he's recently received some information that hopefully will be made public soon, and the receipt of a large sum of money to help with that project. Um, so I'd like to thank him and everybody else involved.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Mark?
I just had a quick question. Has, uh, has anybody heard anything about having a candidate's night? I was just thinking about that, cause looking at the paper, I just was, I know they used to do that, I just didn't know if anybody's heard anything.
So I know that the League of Women Voters was something that they had done for a while, and I know that there were some individuals that were, um, a part of that, and they're no longer able to fill in that role. So I know that somebody had reached out to me and inquired, so they were gonna reach back out to the League of Women Voters and see if they would be willing to help facilitate something of that nature, but as far as I'm aware, uh, there will not be a candidate's night as there has been historically unless something changes.
Okay. I was just curious, cause just to let the people know, but, uh, that was a...
I mean, I'd, I'd be, well, we're not supposed to discuss, but, you know, I just, I'd be willing to emcee it, you know? I mean, you know? You know, if that's not a conflict, we're clear with, you know, state ethics and all the gods that be, but I'd be happy to, you know, run that. You just need the camera guy to participate.
I mean, we could probably...
But certainly, we should showcase the, uh, you know, twenty candidates for the Board of Selectmen positions that are open.
Mr. Chairman, you know, candor, it really should be some agency outside the town.
It'll be standing room only here, so, I don't know, let's, um...
I don't know, it's a great, that's a great point, Mark.